Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the Granby Board of Education meetings in a fresh new school year. School started last week. It was a very enthusiastic start to the year. We had a really wonderful convocation as well. Over the summer, Rosemary Weber, a former board chair and long-term board member for 12 years, and her 12 years of devoted service, she decided to step down from the board. And in her place, the Board of Selectmen has appointed Ali Zafar, who is joining us over here. Welcome, Ali. Thank you so much for volunteering for this job. You might regret all the hours at some point or another, but we're very happy to have you onboard. Thank you. Next up, I was going to address a few issues that came up during the first week of school and maybe a little bit prior to that. Toward the end of the summer, Governor Ned Lamont issued a statement promoting the elimination of cell phones at the schools. The Board of Education and our administration are very aware of this. Granby school administrators and teachers have been expressing concerns about the high level of distractions caused by student cellphone use in recent years. The Board fully acknowledges that cell phones are a distraction and the use of social media often has a negative impact on the mental health of our students. This summer, the Board purposefully read the book, "The Anxious Generation," to help understand the data behind cellphone use and its generational impact on learning. Currently, our current policy, phones are permitted at our middle school, but are to be left in backpacks or pockets, only to be used before and after school hours. The high school has a bell-to-bell cellphone policy, meaning students are not permitted to use their cell phones during class periods. In the past, policies at both schools were not consistently enforced. There are no changes in our practice at this time. We are working to be consistent in our enforcement of the policies that were in place before. This information was shared with all parents by the middle school and high school administration, as well as with students. Going forward, the Board, administration, and the staff are working together to determine what we should or can do, long-term, to reduce the distraction and negative impact on learning and school culture caused by cell phones. Any changes we make in order to be effective must be done with the support of the community and the stakeholders, parents with children in the school system, because this is who would be directly impacted by any changes. We know that cell phones are a part of life, especially with the loss of landlines. Families use their phones to remain in contact, make changes to schedules, arrange pickups. Apps are used to schedule sporting events and social events. We get it. We are parents, and we use cell phones, too. Therefore, while we are strictly enforcing the bell-to-bell rule at the high school, we will be arranging opportunities with the community to have discussions in regard to how we can manage this issue for long-term workable solutions that are in the best interest of the people any changes will impact most. As adults, we are not immune to the detrimental impacts of social media. We see a lot of discourse over social media, often in a way that misrepresents facts and negatively impacts our staff, our board members, and, most importantly, our students. If you have a question or concern, please contact the appropriate staff member or board member to address it. As the district works on our communication issues, this is a two-way street, and I would ask that the community do the same. Communicating directly with the superintendent, a staff member, a board member will get you closer to an accurate and appropriate answer or resolution. There are also concerns regarding return to a pre-COVID policy at the middle school, requiring students to put their backpacks in lockers to keep our classrooms free of clutter and help promote organizational and time management skills for our students. Important life skills our educators report are needed. All students have since been provided with locks, and the students have done a great job adapting. Our district has evolved in the past year to set us up for long-term progress and success. As Superintendent Burke often says, "We are this close to greatness." We are digging out from the impacts of COVID. We are making improvements to our facilities. We are making improvements to our methodology. Change cannot happen overnight, and it requires focus. I would ask that the community assist us in promoting a positive educational environment. Unnecessary and often false negativity hurts our staff and students, which in turn increases staff turnover, increases our costs, and provides for an inconsistent education for our kids. Thank you to the vast majority of parents who supported their students through all these changes and to those who reached out to school administrators with questions or concerns in an effort to work together to create a better learning environment and strong, resilient children. So, in the midst of all that, I failed to acknowledge Katie. She's recently moved from junior to senior, our student rep. So, you've been promoted. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And it is my understanding that we have a junior who will be joining us at our next meeting. Sophia Brenson is a junior at GMHS and carries an impressive course load, taking a couple of UConn ECE courses. She's also a member of the varsity swim team. Sophia shared with Superintendent Burke that she applied to be a Board of Education student representative to improve her public speaking skills, which she feels is an important attribute to possess, as well as provide a service to the community. We welcome Sophia to the Board of Education. We look forward to her contributions, and we look forward to seeing her at our next meeting. All right. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to public comment. Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the Board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the Board, and Board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in a dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to five minutes, and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member, or to discuss student matters which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. Like always, we are going to be starting with public comment from people who are present in the room, and thereafter, we will move to people on Zoom. If you wish to make public comment and you are on Zoom, please make sure you enter something into the chat so we can make sure you are appropriately in the queue. Do we have anyone present who would like to make public comment? You can step forward, please. Podium over there. And introduce yourself, please.
My name is Nick Faraco or Nicholas Faraco. I live on Tan Fawn Drive in Granby. I've been in education my whole life. I'm a former teacher, guidance counselor, principal of an alternate education school, and I had my own private counseling agency. I've been retired now for 30...well, I've worked for 35 years. I've been retired, but fortunately, I still have my medical faculties. However, it concerns me in the sense that I believe that my students in the past, and I've had many, would all testify that I am a caring, concerned, and passionate individual for their well-being. It concerns me that I heard just recently that on the first day of school, there was an online questionnaire regarding gender identification, personal pronouns, whatever. I'm not totally familiar with it because I couldn't find it online, whatever it was, but I understand that it's there. I just didn't get it. But anyway, my point is, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, but I find that this is, in my mind, in my opinion, inappropriate for the educational setting. In my mind, it has nothing to do with education. Schools are there to educate, not to necessarily support, in my mind, what is a political agenda. And therefore, I would hope that Granby would reconsider this line of thinking, because I do not believe it will lead anywhere that is productive. Lastly, many people do not know that, and I didn't know personally, that there have been thousands of gender-transforming surgeries on our young people. And those people who say, "We have to care about these students," and affirm them in their gender confusion, that's not the way to help them. The highest suicide risk comes from these children that have received transgender-authoring surgeries. They are the highest suicide risk. So, please, educate yourselves. Understand that we're moving in a direction that will only lead to no good and destruction. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd like to make public comment?
Good evening. My name is Mike Moranko, 150, Nacho, Granby, Connecticut. I'd like to start off, go back to last year. The last meeting was supposed to be on Wednesday. I believe the date was changed to the Tuesday before because of Juneteenth, but nothing was posted online, as myself and another parent showed up on Wednesday in the parking lot, and were looking at each other, wondering where everybody was for the meeting. Once again, this goes back to communication. There's no communication between the school board and parents. Called the Board Ed on Wednesday last week, trying to get ahold of Sherri Burke. Jen Parsons answered the phone and asked if I'd like...I asked her if I can leave a voice message. Jen said she'd take a message and give it to Ms. Burke. I gave Ms. Parsons my name and number, asked her to have Ms. Burke call me when she could. Ms. Parsons asked me what this is in regards to. I asked if I can just leave the message. She said she needed to know. So, I told her it was regarding the survey that was given on Wednesday. She got irate with me. She wanted to know what student it was.
I'm going to ask you to refrain from personal attacks against our administration, please.
I mean, this is a conversation that was had. It was recorded.
You can...
This is me trying to get ahold of the superintendent and not ever hearing back from anybody.
I'm going to ask you to refrain...
Okay.
...from personal attacks against our administration, please.
Okay. We'll call her JP. Demanded to know what student took a picture of the survey, who sent it to me, what class it was in, who the teacher was, who the parent was, wanting to know how I got this information. This information, you know, it's none of the school's business or the Board's business where I got the information, but it wasn't one person. It was several people who sent it to me. Once again, like this gentleman said, it was, you know, regarding the pronouns. But the other question on there was asking who they could use the pronouns in front of, pretty much asking if they want it hid from the parents. Can the school use these pronouns in class, in front of other students, just with the student and teacher, in front of the parents? Can they be addressed like that to the parents? So, to me, that's hiding it from the parents. I don't understand why the school feels okay to hide this type of information from parents. This did make it to some of the Granby Facebook pages. A lot of parents and students commented that they weren't happy about these questions and other questions. I don't believe it's any of the school's business or teacher's business, what students do after school, what they do for fun. I mean, that's not their job. Their job is to teach the students and set them up, you know, for a career, set them up for life, you know, teach them what they need to know. You know, these kids' minds aren't...they can't comprehend at this age level, you know, sexual transformations and gender and everything else. I mean, these kids, when I go to the grocery store, they can't count change back to me. You know, I pay for something, and I give them, so I get even five back. They look at me like I have three heads. Grocery store, gas station, I mean, these kids can't count...they can't read a clock on the wall. It's not digital. I mean, how are we setting these kids up if they can't do simple tasks? And over the summer, I realized what happens at these meetings. You guys sit up here, and you have your employees, the people from the town, the people from the schools, administrators come in here and tell you guys how good of a job you're doing, when you're not. Look at our test scores. Our test scores are down across the board, every subject, and that's with your curve. And I don't understand why we keep going down on test scores because the national average goes down. Why don't we go against what we did last year, and five years ago, and 10 years ago? Just because the national average goes down, does that mean we need to go with a curve? Do you get graded on a curve at work? Lastly, there's still bullying issues going on, at least I know with the middle school. Kids are calling kids' names, you know, fat, joking on weight, but this is happening in front of teachers. Students are saying stuff to teachers. Teachers aren't handling it. You know, I thought these are mandated reporters. I thought teachers were there to help guide these students and teach them that picking on somebody isn't right.
Thank you, Mr. Moranko. That's five minutes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present in the room that would like to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? I'm turning my attention to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comment?
Yes.
We can't hear you for some reason. Hold on one second, please. Mr. and Mrs. Reagan, I can see that you're...yeah, just hang on. Do we know what's going on?
I think it's a...I think you can hear the background noise.
Um, I don't know.
Mr. and Mrs. Reagan, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, now we can hear. Yeah, no, no, now I can hear you. We couldn't hear you before.
Okay. All right. Susan Reagan, here we go in Granby. I'm happy to hear that some of the previous speakers actually touched on the seven subjects that I'm going to speak about tonight. Test scores in Granby School, the school district, all grades combined noticeably disappearing, minimal improvement, as the English language arts went up two-tenths of 1 percent. Math went up 1.1 percent, both with fewer students and more money spent. Of the ELAs, only 65.8 percent of the student population met or exceeded the state goal, and math only 54.4 percent met or exceeded state goals. Number two, I had mentioned in my last email to Superintendent Burke, I copied and also copied what Jennifer Parsons and Monica Lowen on these subjects. I copied Mike Walsh, Mark Fantino, Pauline Greer, and Charlene Russell Tucker, that the current direction is not beneficial to our youth's academic welfare and future opportunities. Parents need more authority over their children's physical and mental health. DEI and BLM are taking up time better spent on traditional educational subjects, reading writing and arithmetic. This position is finding popularity on a national basis. Number three, something else that I've spoken about for a long time in the drummer and op-eds, and I was to the editor, and I'm very happy to hear tonight, that you are looking toward working about cell phones being 100 percent not in school or locked up in the younger cellphone pouches during school hours. We hope that you adopt this proposition for the whole school today. Socially door-handed actions without full authority to do so, the Walz Road incident that was given a pass, the female gift bags given out to fifth grader boys included, totally unacceptable and useless. Where will a boy put his tampons in his ears? There is no bodily...there are no bodily fluids either up their nose or in their ears, and biologically, females do not use prey the place either. So, what silliness is that, and at what great cost? Transgendering. We heard from a neighbor that their neighbor's high school son received a survey regarding how they wanted to be addressed, regarding boy's name of the girl, the girl's name of the boy, and pronouns accordingly. What's that about? Nonsense. More wasted time. Ridiculousness. You are transgendering and not helping our students. Congratulations, my final comment is congratulations to Ali Zafar's daughter, Zafar Zafar, who was the chance to be the high school representative on the Granby Board of Selectmen, and we'll have the honor of sitting next to Dr. Mafa on that board. That's it for this evening. I look forward to participating in your future meetings and commenting on the subjects that are of great concern to our entire population, not only the children, the parents of children, and additionally, the taxpayers whose money is being misspent. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present on Zoom that would like to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, I am closing public comment. I think we're going to have a change in the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to move our superintendent's report to item number three, or item number four, please. Could I have a motion?
I move that we modify the agenda and move the superintendent's report to item number four on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. I need a motion to...do I need a motion?
No.
No, we're good? Okay.
You mean a motion to amend the agenda.
All right. Now, I need a motion to amend the agenda.
I move that we amend the agenda to reflect the change in the superintendent's report.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Superintendent Burke?
Thank you. So, I appreciate you amending the agenda so that I could share my comments while we still have a full room. Oftentimes, I find myself speaking to an empty audience, and the chairperson and myself really do wish to be as transparent as possible so that when we make our comments, the folks that have raised any concerns or questions to the Board can hear those responses. I know not all of us have time to go back and watch the video, and so I do appreciate that change. Thank you. We had an outstanding opening of school. The energy was positive. Our staff was committed. We had ongoing work throughout the summer to really prepare and present the opening of school in a way that was very purposeful to the tasks ahead. We had a convocation that was very well-received by our staff, and that does not go unnoticed, that we had to really...these mics are giving me a little...it does not go unnoticed that that was the work of many individuals across the school district. I wanted to use this opportunity to show my gratitude for office staff, custodial and maintenance staff, all of our teaching assistants and paraprofessionals, and certainly our bus drivers. It takes a tremendous amount of effort on the side of the school district to open on that first day. And I know as the superintendent of schools, when I walk through those halls the week prior to the first day, there is a drastic change for that first day of school. All the boxes are put away, and the bulletin boards are covered, and it's really a beautiful sight to see. So, I wanted to just express my gratitude to everyone that makes that happen. We did also welcome back our new teachers to the school district with some two days of professional development for new staff. We also spent time over the summer with our administrative leadership team to prepare our planning for the year. So, the work in the summer is quite busy and really provides us with everything that we need for a positive opening of school. This year, I did unveil, if you will, at our convocation, our theme for the year. The theme this year is "Connect, Believe, Achieve." And this was a very thoughtful process to identify. Our ultimate goal certainly is around achievement. That is our charge as a school district, is to prepare students for college and career readiness. And we wanted to backwards map, if you will, and think about the context that really provide optimal learning environment for our students. And first and foremost, that is about relationship building and connections. Knowing our students, knowing their interests, watching them on the sidelines of a football game or a softball game, or cheering them on from the audience at a school play, or a band, or a chorus recital, really unites the community. And so, those connections across the community of Granby are very important. This year, we are looking to further promote opportunities for mentorship, to have some of our older generation of community members connect with our younger generations of students. We've really had a concerted effort to open the doors to our schools post-COVID, and we want to continue that work, and that connection sort of summarizes that. Secondly, believe. Believe can be interpreted different ways. For us here in the school district, we believe that all kids can. All kids can learn. All kids can excel. All kids can have success. And we, as educators, need to believe that we make a difference in the lives of children. Teachers need to know that what they do matters when it comes to test results or overall achievement and performance for our students. So, we talked quite a bit about belief as an important ingredient to our overall success. And lastly, certainly, we want to promote high levels of achievement. I do believe that we are absolutely moving in the right direction, and our data does support that. Although our growth may be incremental, it is important to continue to move in the right direction, and we measure every opportunity for growth, and we scrutinize every decline in order to continue to hone our skills and improve our practice. So, that is a joint effort that will allow us to really fully realize our potential when it comes to student achievement. So, that is this year's theme. We will be using it very purposefully in our communications and to help really rally support around those focus areas for us this year. I also wanted to share that we have our first SEPTO meeting of the year coming up on Monday, September 9th. We really encourage community members and parents of children with special needs to attend. It's a highly informative opportunity to get together. Those meetings are now being held in Central Office. We also have our first Middle School PAC meeting scheduled for 9:00 a.m. on Friday, September 20th. Throughout the year, last year, those meetings alternated from morning to evening opportunities to allow for different schedules to be able to make that work. We are getting ready to open all of our schools for our middle school open house, which is the first one to kick us off on September 10th, followed by the high school open house on September 12th. These are opportunities for parents and guardians to come, visit their child's classrooms, and follow their schedule to learn more about the curriculum and the expectations for the school year. Curriculum nights for our elementary schools will be held a bit later in the month, so I will identify those dates at our next meeting. Everything is certainly on our website with details for when those will take place. We did welcome Sue Hennaberry as an assistant principal at the high school. She's working in an interim capacity while we search for our new assistant principal at Granby Memorial High School. Interviews are underway. We have a very strong pool of candidates, and we hope to have a decision relatively soon. We have also posted the position of director of facilities. Our director, Shannon Sullivan, has stepped down. I want to thank him for all of his work with our building committees and high school roof project, which you'll hear a bit about later. We wish him well, and that position is posted, and we look to interview soon. Last year, communication was a primary goal for us, and this year... Last year, communication was a primary goal for us, and this year, we are in year two of our communication plan. We are promoting communication as a two-way opportunity. So that opportunity for two-way communication, meaning that we listen just as much as we put out into the world, into the community of Granby, is essential. This year, one of our tasks to improve upon that, we developed a flow chart of sorts, how to have your concerns addressed if you are looking for the right person to speak to. And I think during the chairperson's report, you heard that we're aware of some challenges that popped up. They may have popped up on social media, but oftentimes, we receive that information second, third, fourth, or even fifth hand. We can't possibly monitor what's out there. But we do want to make sure that you know who to call when you have a concern. We heard tonight that someone had a challenge in getting hold of me. I'm very easy to get a hold of. My door is always open, my phone number is posted, and I respond to email regularly. We want you to communicate with us, and we are willing and able to communicate as often as necessary. When we can have that communication immediately, we solve challenges quickly. When we can have communication at the closest level, we can have the deepest understanding. When things are prolonged, often both parties end up feeling frustrated and don't ultimately have their concerns addressed. And so I ask people to please reference this. We put it in the Drummer article, I included it in my newsletter, Home to All of Our Families at the Start of the Year, and we really encourage people to use the information there so that you can get your questions answered. In addition to that, I do want to address a couple of items that had popped up in order to offer some clarification. I do appreciate the comments about the surveys, and I too wish for parents to have full transparency and understanding when we are engaging in dialogue with students. There is legislation that allows parents to opt out of surveys if they wish to do so. The definition of surveys is one that's very important. A definition of survey in that legislation is around official capacity, things like our climate and culture survey, things like surveys related to student mental health, anything that's federally funded or state-funded, parents have an opportunity to opt out of. And we support that, and you can find more information on our website in order to be able to do that. Google Forms or questions to students, certainly at the start of the year, are commonplace. Teachers often look for ways to engage children using technology or fun, sort of interactive ways of getting to know students. It was brought to my attention a year ago, that surveys were being used and it was not optional. We addressed it as a school district. We asked for those questions to remain optional, and that didn't happen. And so we understand that it looks as though, perhaps, when you see something online, that it takes on a life of its own. The reality is, we had two or three teachers use a getting-to-know-you activity in their classroom, and it included a variety of questions to help to get to know our students. We support the idea that if those questions are optional, we can support students who want to share something with us that is vital to our relationship with them and helping them feel comfortable and included in school, while at the same time, not making any other students potentially feel uncomfortable that they are needing to answer a question that they wish not to. So that is something that we are committed to going forward. We want children to feel included, we want children to feel celebrated, we want children to feel seen and heard and valued, and we want that for every member of our community. We take feedback, and we learn from it, and we grow from it. And when you access the appropriate channel to share your concerns, we will act quickly. So I want to really emphasize that picking up the phone or emailing a teacher directly, having your child speak directly to their teacher is always the best way to have an immediate response. And we want to do so, we're committed to doing so. In the second year of our communication plan, we are looking to further develop systems so that you can easily communicate and find the resources that you need on our website. We've made some significant improvements in that area. We also developed the Ask GPS so that you can just email askgps@grambyschools.org, and you will get an immediate response. And then we will also post our response publicly on the website so that other people can learn from your question as well. So I thought it was important that I be able to address some of those items early in the meeting rather than wait till the end, and I certainly look forward to further conversation.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Superintendent Burke? All right, thank you. Katie, your first report of the year as a senior.
I know.
You got the whole thing yourself, too.
Yeah. So the year started off very well with senior sunrise on the morning of Tuesday, August 27th. Unfortunately, it was kind of disappointing because it was very foggy, but it was nice for our whole class to come together before school, like outside of the school environment, to just kind of like be together before we start this next big step of our career. And before the first day of school, freshman orientation came, like happened, and it was really good. Student government and NHS members gave tours of the school to incoming freshmen, which I think really helped them understand like the layout of our school and how to find their classes. And they were also introduced to many of our great clubs through a fair in the cafeteria. Drama auditions were this afternoon for The Twisted Tales of Poe, which is a play inspired by Edgar Allan Poe's poetry, and they will be in rehearsals next week. In addition to this, jazz band and chamber singers are going to be starting their tryouts in the coming weeks, and we should be seeing more of them hopefully soon. National Honor Society had their first meeting on Tuesday morning, this Tuesday, not last Tuesday, and we are looking forward to our induction ceremony, which should happen later in October. And like Ms. Burke mentioned earlier, open house for high schoolers will be September 10th from 6:00 to 8:00, which will let the parents like see the schedule that students will face and kind of understand the school to hopefully help them at home with their assignments. And moving to sports, it's only been a week, so not much has happened yet. Girls' soccer has had their first game against Notre Dame, which they won 3-1, which is a very good start to their season. And their first home game will be this Saturday at 12:00 a.m. Boys' soccer will have...
12:00 a.m.
PM, sorry. It's a little confusing. Boys' soccer will also have a game on Saturday at Coggin Chog, and their first home game will be next week against Ellington. Volleyball has their first home game on Monday, the 12th, against Bolton. And this past weekend, they had a very successful play day at Avon where they went 5-1 against some very competitive teams, so we're looking to hopefully have a good season. Field hockey will have their first game against Connerd at home at 5:30 on Friday, the 6th. Football has had a scrimmage on Monday against Agawam, and they have another upcoming scrimmage on Saturday at 9:00 at home. And their first game will be home, but like at Canton because like we're a team.
Because Canton is home.
Yeah, against SMSA on the 13th. And cross country will have their first meet of the season on the 11th against Ellington.
Thank you so much. Congratulations on your senior year. Are you excited?
Yeah.
We noticed the fog on the morning of the first day of school. We were talking about how that may have been a disappointment for us.
On the drive home, I saw a really nice sunrise, but...
We thought maybe it added a sense of mystery to the year ahead.
It was fun, though.
Good, I'm glad you had a great time, and thank you so much for your report. Up next, we have reports and discussion, summer programming report by Jennifer Parsons, our assistant superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. And I have Katie Busby, who will support me and join me for this presentation. Katie, it might be easiest if you stand on this side. Thank you. So summer is extremely busy here in Granby. While our teachers and students are hopefully enjoying their summer, Katie, I hope you got to enjoy every moment of it. We are very busy here in Granby. We have many teachers who do come in and our students who are engaged. So we wanted to take a few moments to share with you some of the summer happenings. So there are a few categories of activities and programming that happens over the summer. One of our categories is called Extended School Year Services. For our students in district who do have individualized education plans, they may be eligible for Extended School Year Services if it's shown that over the summer or school vacations, there's regression in skills. So we bring our students in, and there's a few different formats. One is through individualized tutoring based on students' goals and objectives and their IEPs. And the case managers, our staff, our teachers that work with them during the school year help plan for that summer instruction to maintain skills. Overall, we had 75 students in grades K through 12 participate in that, and in addition, some students receive additional services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech services over the summer as well. Right here, you see Ms. Striker, who's one of our teachers over at Wells Road, working with a student in that setting. Camp Kelly is our preschool service structure. So there were 20 days of in-person instruction, and preschool students come in and participate more in a class setting. So while some students come in for tutoring, they come in for an hour of service, maybe two hours of service, Camp Kelly is more of a structured start time and end time to work on social skills as well as everything that they may need to work on individually. And that was 11 students. So those are two of our Extended School Year Services, and there's one more service on the next slide. And that is our secondary vocational programming. So in our, in the public school system across the state and across the nation, there are students who are eligible for services beyond their, the typical end age for high school. And for students who fall into a category where they need some work on vocational skills, we have a great secondary vocational program where those objectives in an IEP may be around working, work experiences, communication in public settings, and so on and so forth. And so those academic, social, and vocational skills are delivered through this program, and we had 11 students who were in 7th grade all the way up through our Bear Academy up to age 22. So our Extended School Year Services, the three categories that I just shared, are services that are funded through special education streams and are required through federal legislation. Jen Miller is our director of that programming. She was not able to be here tonight. She's actually doing some continuing education credits for some of her reading certifications, but she extended her well wishes to you and wanted me to let you know what a productive summer it was. So Katie Busby is our director of our enrichment programming. Our enrichment programming is a little bit different in many ways. This is choice-based enrollment programming, and there's classes for grades 1 through 3, and then there's a class for grades 4 through 6, and they switch off on morning and afternoon, correct? Most of them. Okay. So I'll let Katie talk a little bit more about the opportunities that were there, but I do want to point out that our enrichment programming is self-sufficient. So what we do is we charge a small tuition to families to participate in this program. It just covers the funding for the program itself. So Katie, go right ahead.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. I think this is year 11 of me doing this presentation to you on summer programming, so can't get enough of it. So the big, the big success of the summer is that we increased 29 registrations, so we were able to run more programs than we have in previous summers. We really increased in the areas of art and science because those are our biggest draw. Our students love to come do hands-on art and science, so we increased those, and we also included strings and maintained that from what it's been in previous years. We had some student volunteers come in to help because it's a lot when you have 20-plus kinder through second graders doing clay in a hot art room, so we brought in some, maybe I forced some helpers to come in and help our teacher there. But one of the other big successes was our teacher who comes in to do the science, and he's done it for many years for us, he had access to a lot of robotics, and so that was one of the classes we were able to offer. And it's pretty cool to see first, second, third grade age, all students, but really first, second graders program and make robots go through a maze, and they were so into it. So I have a couple of pictures throughout because that was pretty fun to see the, our real little friends get to do some pretty high hands-on and engaging activities around that. The other two areas I oversee are credit recovery. That has looked fairly similar year to year. It's two teachers who will kind of alternate, focusing on different content areas, specialties, and it's to remediate their credits for graduation. So students come to kind of get caught up on what they need to, and they use some online programming, but the teachers are there to help support students in person if they have questions and need support. And the other program we have is RAMP, which is for our intervention students in grades entering first grade through entering 6th grade. They are invite-only, and it is, this year, we had 38 students, which is about around where we usually are. And we keep grades 1 through 3 together and 4 through 6, and we have two teachers, so they spend an hour with one teacher doing reading, writing, and then another, the other teacher's doing math, and then after an hour, they switch. We did have a couple of students help out with our younger friends in there doing reading games and things like that, and that went for 15 days total.
Thank you. And that's a great opportunity for students who work so hard all year with our staff to really make gains in their academic performance, to maintain that over the summer by coming in to just do check-ins really on their skills. An additional summer opportunity in the enrichment category is we do use some of our funding from our Open Choice Grant to provide the opportunity for all Open Choice participants, those are Hartford residents that are Granby students, to attend a week of camp through the Granby Parks Recreation Program. It allows students who may not be able yet to drive themselves or have a ride, to come and connect with friends in district, to be part of the wonderful opportunities that we have available in Granby. So we had four students participate in the middle school programming, which had a lot of individual day-long field trips, and eight students participate in the elementary grade level camps for a week in August where the theme was "The Music in You." Next slide, please. A new addition to this presentation this year is we also wanted to highlight two really wonderful programs that are happening at the high school over the summer. So the first opportunity is we really want our students who are taking advanced placement courses to have an opportunity to be exposed to some of the study skills, some of the rigorous coursework that they will experience in those AP classes. So students who are taking their first AP class are invited to a one-week program to boost their skills for those classes. So this summer, across the high school, we had 26 students come in for a week of their time, and as you get older, I feel like that summertime becomes even more valuable. So they really gave up a great, a great week to be part of the work here, to work on study skills, note-taking, and meet with our AP teachers. So we had about four or five teachers who came in and volunteered their time for that. The last program that I want to highlight is our College Exploration Summer Seminar. And so this year, Julie Bragg is one of our school counselors. She has a longstanding commitment to this program. It's the 14th summer that our Granby students have had the opportunity to go on a three-day set of college tours. So there are six colleges that they visited over the course of three days, and those colleges rotate every year. So you can see this year, the group went to Trinity, UConn, WPI, Assumption, Bryant, and University of Rhode Island. And they did an official tour information session, they met with students, and got to tour the campus. So if we could show the video quickly, this summer, we had an extra special opportunity in that a budding videographer was able to do a day in the life of summer college explorations. So these are our students.
We're having sound issues today.
The thing that worked before is working now, so...
Thank you for trying.
We can watch without it.
No, we can't.
Yeah, I think we need the sound for this.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. So we will post the video on our school counseling page at the high school. And Superintendent Burke, I would ask that you send that out in your update. And as always, all of our presentations are linked to the agendas online, so you can go right ahead on and find that link. So our high school students, if we could hear them, would be telling you that for some of them, it was the first time they were setting foot on a college campus and how much they really enjoyed seeing the beauty and meeting with existing students. So not only were our students very busy this summer, there was a lot of professional learning going on in district. We had three luncheon learns where we brought together twelve-month employees in district to come together and work on a specific topic and do some professional learning. We, the board approved our new teacher evaluation plan last spring. So we had a work group over the summer who came in and worked on implementing and operationalizing that plan and creating forums, websites, resources for teachers. We also had teachers come in, Ms. Busby was one of them. How many summer hours did you do?
I did thirty.
Thirty summer curriculum hours in terms of updating assessments and rubrics and documentation around our curriculum. We also had administrative retreats where our team was together working on how to put into place action steps to support our goals around achievement and communications. Additionally, there were leadership meetings where teams were planning in-house, and we had our new teacher orientation. We welcomed eighteen new staff this year. You can see them in the bottom there. And we did a lot of interviewing around bringing those folks on board. So it was never a dull moment this summer in Granby between our teachers, our students, and our staff. So Katie, is there anything else you wanted to add around the work?
No.
Okay.
It's done, it's successful.
Great. So we're both available for questions if there are any from the board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Real quick, I wanted to ask, I noticed in the enrichment numbers that the program continues to grow, it looks like, which is great, that's fantastic. Looking, was it an increase of twenty-nine, I think I saw? Yeah. Is there anything, anything that's needed or in demand in regard to the enrichment programming? Is there something that would be additional benefit to our students, especially since this seems to be of interest? I mean, the biggest draw is always, I've tried to do sports, I've tried to include like other, like, kind of outside the box, and I get just so many students for science and art. So that's where I keep kind of putting our energy in. But the classes were big, right? So that's why, so the, the more I can continue to offer those and differentiate them, so it's not just like one of our classes is STEAM, but the robotics was a whole week that they could do. So maybe I could start tailoring some of those to a little more specifics and bringing kids into really specific areas of interest. We had a little bit of interest brewing back up about, you know, they want a create, some creative writing or something in the, you know, math ELA kind of readiness, getting ready for keeping their, their children fresh over the summer in their academic areas. So that would be another area that we could explore.
Excellent. Does, any board members have any questions?
Actually, I do. So it said with the Extended School Year Program, there are seventy-five participants. Was that capped, or was that all that participated?
Yeah. So the determination for providing Extended School Year Services is a PPT or Planning and Placement Team decision based on that criteria that a student may regress over a time off of school. So we really need to be available to meet the needs of the students. So once those meetings happen, we, Jen Miller, this is her, her work. She really puts together a matrix of what we are required to provide, and then we schedule accordingly. So we will hire tutors to meet the needs over the summer.
Does everyone that is invited accept? Are there people that don't, don't accept, maybe because of scheduling conflicts or what have you?
That's a great question. So families can decline service. And typically, we know that in advance so that we can plan accordingly.
So you don't turn anybody away?
No. No, we meet the need that is there that we are required to provide.
In, in my experience where I have worked, some families will decline based on needing full-day camp or having a vacation scheduled during that time.
Makes sense, totally understand that. And then with regard to the AP Power Boost course, have we seen an increase in enrollment in AP classes as a result of this?
So I will say, yes, we have over time seen an increase in those AP enrollments, both in the offerings and the enrollments. But I would also give you a sneak preview that in October, our Director of School Counseling will come to speak directly to that. So I would save some of the celebrations there for her to share.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question too. The Ramp Program, it's based on intervention services. So does that indicate students that are getting intervention through MTSS but are not special ed students?
Correct. So every, there are students who may not be receiving, and they may not have an individualized education plan, but may need just opportunities to maintain the great growth they've made that year because they are a little bit below. And so we want to support every child where they are, and that we have used grant funding for, so that is not at a cost to Granby Public Schools.
I love it.
Any other questions from any board members?
Quick question. And please, so the enrichment programming, which crazy chemistry is a favorite in our household. Is the only one of, of these programs that a fee, a small fee is required?
Thank you for clarifying that. So the enrichment programming does charge a fee. It is very nominal. It is eighty dollars, I believe, for the week. Our credit recovery does charge a fee of just, just shy of two hundred dollars per course. And our college explorations is another self, self-funding program. This year, I believe it was about two hundred and fifty dollars for the three days of the college tours, which mostly went towards lunch and transportation. We don't turn any families away. We will always find a way to support a student who wants to participate in any of those opportunities. But it is important that we, we try to run those at a zero-based impact.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation, we really appreciate it. Thank you for the extra summer hours and, and all you do to support our kids when we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. All right, next up, Superintendent's Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Five Annual Goals.
Thank you. I've asked for them to be projected just to assist my presentation of the goals as well as anyone that's watching from Zoom. You know, I've given you a preview already. We have two primary goals. One is student achievement, which we are squarely focused on seeing significant improvement in the area of mathematics and language arts. And the second is communication, and we're into year two of the communication plan. So this should sound familiar because it is familiar. I don't believe that when you set a high standard or you don't meet the mark, you just give up and start over. I believe you buckle down and you work harder and you keep going after your target. So you will see that our superintendent's goal related to achievement across the district is the same goal as last year because we're not there yet. We are making really important strides in the right direction, but we are still falling short of these rigorous goals, identifying that eighty percent of our students will achieve proficiency or higher on the Smarter Balance Assessment in those grades three through eight where they are measured and achieve proficiency on the PSAT and SAT at our grades nine through, nine through eleven. We are targeting seventy percent of our students meeting proficiency in the area of mathematics. We have a steeper climb in mathematics, and we are focused in that arena. We are performing, in the high, mid to high seventy percent of our students for next-gen science are performing at proficiency. And we want to strive to continue to see improvements in that area, targeting eighty percent. So we've done a couple of specific things over the past year to help get us closer to these goals. Last budget season, the Board of Education approved the addition of a certified math intervention teacher at our middle school, where we have seen a need in the area of targeted instruction for mathematics. We have highly qualified and skillful tutors. The difference with having a certified teacher is that they can do all of the very purposeful planning related to assessments and really streamline their approach. We are also expecting for there to be some carryover between that small group targeted instruction back into our classrooms, where we want to see students apply the knowledge that they're learning. So our focus is absolutely to move each individual child on their continuum of growth in the area of mathematics, knowing that we do certainly have some work to do in this area. If you could go to the second part of this. Thank you. This bulleted list at the top identifies some of the ways, it's certainly not an exhaustive list, but some of the ways that we are working to do better and do things differently. All superintendents will stand before their community or their board and say that they're striving for improved achievement levels. It's what we're in the business for. We have to know the target, so that's our seventy percent proficiency and our eighty percent proficiency in ELI. That is, our one hundred percent of students will make growth. And then we have to have ways to get there that we all know and understand and are committed to. And so this list identifies some of the ways that we've already begun to identify needed improvements. You heard quite a bit last year at the board around our building thinking classroom strategies because research supports that the more engaged our learners are, up, moving, working collaboratively, they will retain information and they will be better problem solvers when they have those opportunities. Assistant Superintendent Parsons has facilitated district-wide walkthroughs. Many of you have engaged in those. We want to continue to sort of peel back the layers of the onion closer and closer to individualized student data. And so we are also looking to incorporate some school-based walkthroughs and opportunities for teachers to observe each other and learn from their colleagues. We have expert teachers in our district, and we have some novice teachers in our district. And we have some teachers that just want to learn and try something new. And so we really want to facilitate the sharing of ideas at the school and level. We're continuing to have a laser focus on individual student data. We have a new platform that was adopted two years ago, the, the EduClimber. We're looking to really ensure that teachers have the data that they're needing to access so that they can really pinpoint what individual students' needs are, and we continue to grow. Data needs to be informing our practice. It's not just like, okay, we took that ta, that test, here's the score. We need to always go back into the student's performance so that we can make those adjustments. A couple of the things that I'll just mention here, we already talked about the middle school intervention specialist. We have engaged with a consultant to take a very careful look at our secondary schedules. We are looking at our middle school schedule and our high school schedule with the goal of maximizing instructional time first and foremost, and secondly, looking to maximize opportunities for students. We have two schools that are fantastic on a shared campus. I think that we could even develop further opportunities for our students if we had some shared scheduled practices. So as you know, we've had to reduce our Mandarin instruction in last year's budget. If we can get our two schedules on par with each other, perhaps there's some creative ways to still offer Mandarin across the secondary level. It's just an easy, concrete example, it's not like a definite. But we want that schedule to be conducive to more opportunities for students. We do believe that if we can increase instructional time, that will also help us with ensuring a deeper knowledge base. Jen Parsons also just shared that we have a new teacher evaluation plan. This is highly focused on classroom practices and feedback, and so we do really want to use that as a leverage point to help teachers see where there's opportunity for growth and what, what is happening that is moving our students in the right direction. So that is some ideas as to how we are putting these practices directly in place in our classrooms so that we can continue to move in the right direction. Our second goal is all about communication and community engagement. I feel as though you are very well-versed in the communication plan because you have observed our progress and you have reviewed the plan itself. But all in all, we are really looking to increase the information that we're putting out to our community as well as opportunities to receive information from community members. As I already mentioned in my remarks, we have developed an Addressing School Concerns Progress Chart that I think people are finding very helpful and informative. We are looking to really work on some of our internal structures. We want our teachers to be squarely focused on teaching and learning. We don't want them spending time looking for resources or likewise wondering, you know, who to call when they need to make a change in their insurance plan or something like that. So we're looking to really streamline some of those opportunities, including the addition of a staff newsletter to share information with each other in a timely way. This summer, we already started engaging our administrators in some professional learning around their communication, really working with a communication consultant to identify the best way to put information out. We are inundated with emails and text messages and notifications and alerts, and it becomes challenging to know what to pay attention to. And so this is a craft that our administrators can improve upon in order to really make sure that we're communicating the right information in the right way that will make it most accessible to, to our community. So we look forward to continuing to review our practices in the area of communication, and we will work with our communication plan. So in a nutshell, those are the two goals that are paramount to our work, although of course, all six of the board's goals will remain a part of our daily practice and our ongoing work. Really, it's the student achievement and certainly our community engagement and communication that we are focused on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Superintendent Burke?
I love the Addressing School Concerns Process Chart, and I'm hoping that's something that we can post in multiple places, like even on the school webpages. I don't know if that's already been done, I apologize if it has. But I find those websites kind of challenging to navigate, especially on the phone. So if there's a way to make that easy to see and immediately available for folks that are looking for how to communicate, I think that would be wonderful.
Thank you for that. We do have it on all of our school pages. I will look to see if it's visibly obvious, especially when you're looking on a phone. You make a good point when you have that condensed screen, you sometimes lose things. And I failed to mention that it's not just the chart, like who to call. To the right side of the chart is all, everyone's contact information is right there. One click, and you can see who's the principal, who's the assistant principal. Click on their hyperlink, and you can email them directly along with phone numbers and extensions. We really want to make it very obvious for people so that you don't have to spend time looking and feeling frustrated that you can't get ahold of the right person.
Any additional questions? Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Superintendent Burke. Next up, we have the First Reading of New Policy Thirty-One Seventy-One Point One, Non-Lapsing Education Fund. This was discussed tonight in the Curriculum Policy Technology Communication Subcommittee. Do we want to have?
There's, there's no action to be taken tonight. It's, it's a first read. Nikki Stevenson, our Director of Finance and Operations is, is here. She could certainly give a quick, couple-minute overview if you'd like.
I, I think just considering how, how we're, how we're moving with this.
Sure.
Do you mind just giving a brief little synopsis for everybody? Obviously, who's, everyone in the curriculum committee knows what's going on. But if you could just give a description, that'd be great.
Sure. So the policy that we'll be presenting tonight is called the Non-Lapsing Education Fund. And what this is, is a fund for the Board of Education for the opportunity to put up to two percent of any, any unspent monies from the previous year appropriation into this fund to be utilized for... into this fund to be utilized for one-time expenditures, emergencies, things of that nature. And it would be funds that would be suggested by the superintendent on the amount to go in. The Board of Education would approve that deposit into the account. And they would also approve any expenditures coming out of the account.
Thank you. And just to clarify, it's my understanding that this comes from Connecticut General Statutes. This is something that's been implemented in multiple communities throughout the state already.
That's correct. Yes, this account, this fund, has been in existence. And this year is the first year where boards of education, it can just be spent on educational expenditures.
This went to the curriculum committee today. And at our next meeting at the finance committee, subcommittee, it's going to be discussed there as well. And then that night would be the second reading and motion to approve if the board chooses to do so. So I highly recommend everybody take a look at that.
We've provided some additional context. The legislation is there for you to review as well as Ms. Stevenson's memo so that you can understand why this is being recommended as well as the policy that you would be voting on at the next full board meeting. This way, it will go to the Curriculum and Policy Committee here tonight as a first read. Then the Finance Committee, for obvious reasons, is a finance policy. And then second read with a vote or second time to see a full vote at the board on our next meeting.
Yes, I recall correctly, this is something that you had in practice in the last district that you worked with. I remember you discussing that. So I do recall that. And that was something that stood out to me when we were interviewing you, that I thought that, that that was a great practice. So I do have that recollection.
Yeah, it's very common. I mean, I don't want to give a percentage, but a very high percentage of school districts and boards of education across the state have this non-lapsing fund. It allows for some added security for unplanned expenditures. It's a very transparent process. Nothing would be put into the account or withdrawn from the account for an expenditure without the full board's approval. But it does allow for the Board of Education to have some flexibility when those items pop up that we may not otherwise be able to have a financial source to support.
Especially with regard to some of those special education expenses that we find ourselves hit with often throughout the course of the year. So I do recall that, yes.
All right. So we will bring that up again at the next meeting. Moving on to business requiring action in regard to the Board of Minutes on June eighteenth. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education adopt the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, Donna. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Ollie. All right, next up, approval of the Granby Memorial High School Roof Replacement Project. Did you want to discuss this or?
Yes, I think we need. I think we should read the motion.
Okay.
Second, and then discuss.
The motion pending is that the Granby Board of Education accept the Granby Memorial High School Roof Replacement, State Project Number oh-five-six-oh-oh-five-three-R-R, as complete as recommended by the School Projects Building Committee. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education accept the Granby Memorial High School Roof Replacement, State Project Number zero-five-six-dash-zero-zero-five-three-R-R, as complete as recommended by the School Projects Building Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, now let's discuss. I'm resting.
Some of us have been waiting a long time for this motion. And as a matter of course, we have to make this motion because we cannot get reimbursed from the state for our costs until it has been deemed complete. So I've been looking forward to this day.
Yes, thank you.
As a member of the building committee.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. Those were going to be my sentiments exactly. And I was going to take a moment to thank Donna Nolan for her representation on the building committee. The building committee is a group of thoughtful and committed individuals across the community of Granby that have supported a rather lengthy process with the high school roof project.
We thought we were done last September.
When I toured the schools last spring, about to start my tenure as your new superintendent, words like, "Oh, this should be wrapped up before you even start," were whispered to me on that tour. So it took a turn, as building projects sometimes do. Anyone that's ever tried to do even the smallest of repair in your home knows that sometimes things are uncovered. But we are very grateful to the building committee for their oversight. I'm very grateful to our district leadership that has been diligent in observing the roof and ensuring that any leaks were remedied. Currently, we have had a full inspection and the roof meets our expectations. And we are happy to present it to you for approval. This will allow us to begin the process to submit to the state for reimbursement. Nikki, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that? Did I adequately summarize the goal?
It's the main, yeah, the main purpose of the study so that we can start by Nikki's reimbursement.
Which is an important part. At our next building committee meeting, we will let them know that this came to the board. If you give your approval, that will move the process forward.
So the punch list and all that stuff?
Complete.
Very good.
A hundred percent complete, yes. There was a major challenge that you might recall, even came to the full board, which was they covered the roof in a black membrane. These are all new learning opportunities for me in my first year as superintendent. A roof that has a black membrane will attract the sun and would be bothersome for us because of the heat. That was a major consideration, how to problem-solve that particular error that was made. It was determined with the building committee's support and our architects and builder that we would cover the black membrane completely with a white membrane. So in essence, we have a two-for-one deal on our roof. I have no idea. There's probably contractors listening to this feeling like she has no idea what she's talking about. But the takeaway is.
It was a mistake.
Yes, it was a mistake.
Contractor made the mistake. It didn't cost us additional funds.
Correct.
They had to remedy it and cover it with a white membrane. So the mistake was not borne by the taxpayers, not borne by the town. It was borne by the contractor.
Yeah, and they made it right.
And they did.
And relatively quickly.
Yes.
Everything has been inspected and we can confidently ask for your approval so that we may submit for reimbursement.
So we can get our money back.
Some of it.
Okay.
The state-approved amount.
The state-approved amount, correct.
Which we'll take.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion carries. Next up, committee reports, board standing committee reports. I'm not going to say it all again, Karen, but you know, the curriculum committee met today. How did that go?
Curriculum committee at all.
At all. There you go. Let's go with at all.
All right, I'm going to be brief because it is late. But we met and Assistant Superintendent Parsons presented to us a new format for her monthly report, which is easier to read and very informative and covers six different areas, including academic achievement and instruction, curriculum, learning environment, professional learning, policy and legislation, and hiring and staffing. After that, our Director of Finance and Operations, Nikki Stevenson, shared some information about the Non-Lapsing Education Fund, which we just heard about. And two other policy revisions were presented, one about transportation, simply some rewording because it was outdated, referring to our prior half-day kindergarten language that we had. And then the other was the graduation policy regarding special ed law that applies through a child's twenty-second birthday. Previously, it had been twenty-first birthday. Also, Assistant Superintendent Parsons shared with us some information about some Summit of State assessment data, and she will be presenting more at the board meeting on the eighteenth of this month. And lastly, she also shared with us information regarding a scheduling committee update. And they're starting to look at ways of revising the schedule between the middle and high school to optimize instruction and sharing of staff and so forth. So very informative.
All right, thank you so much, Karen. Does anybody have any questions for Karen? All right, finance personnel facilities, the minutes from the May fifteenth meeting are attached. They will meet next on September eighteenth. Other board-related reports, Kraken Cave. I believe we still need a representative for Kraken Cave, if anyone's willing to serve this year. Timing can be a bit tricky in regard to the meetings. But if anyone has availability, that'd be great. Let me know.
They are daytime meetings, but they're also available on Zoom.
Yes, they are. Granby Education Foundation?
Yeah, I actually have an update from GEF on the grants that were done in the spring and the summer. Sixteen thousand dollars was awarded to the Granby High School Drama Program to purchase new wireless mics and related equipment. The sound system and microphones were used in the spring production of Footloose. Two-hundred-dollar grant was awarded to the Wells Road fourth grades to bring in a visiting graphic artist to support the graphic novel unit that's taught in fourth grade, very popular unit. And then four-hundred-dollar grant was awarded to the middle school for the purchase of baskets and discs to start up a new disc golf program during PE and club sports. And then Lynn Gilzo added that GEF loves seeing the creative, interesting ways that staff and teachers in our Granby Public Schools use grant money to support our schools and students. And they're always seeking new people to join the board and to support the mission of supporting arts and education in Granby.
Thank you so much, Liz. The calendar of events is attached in the back. I won't go through the back. Everybody has access to it. Board member announcements, just real quickly. One of the things I didn't say in the beginning, I wanted to advise that there's going to be a monthly column in the Drummer every month that I'll be drafting in regard to issues that are relevant to the community. Last month, I was discussing FERPA and privacy rights and laws regarding our students and our personnel. Very helpfully drafted in conjunction with Liz Bartlow. Thank you, Liz. Considering she has so much experience in the area. So it was very informative and helpful for me to learn more from Liz in regard to FERPA. So keep an eye out for a monthly column in regard to pressing board of ed issues. Does any other board member have any announcements? All right, action items. Madam Secretary?
I didn't hear any this evening.
I didn't hear any either. Okay. I guess that leaves one more pressing matter. Does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the Board of Education meeting this evening.
Second. Discussion, I am guessing not. I'm all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And welcome back.